And define what essential services and outline some procedures that we can use to minimize exposure to both our employees and the public. This is, I guess this is a pretty serious situation, given what's happening. And for most of us who are young and healthy, it's probably, probably nothing serious. But the last thing we want to do is take it home to a family or a friend or a loved one that might have underlying issues that this could be a life and death situation. So, so what we've come together here for today is to collectively try to put a plan together, to put in effect in the county to minimize our exposure within our county services departments. So Derek, I'm going to put you on the spot quite a bit here, but you have been involved in pandemic planning. And I'd like for you to kind of take the, take the lead on some basic recommendations. And then we'll go through department by department and listen to the, the department's reactions to what, what your basic recommendations are.
All right. So ultimately, like you said, our goal is not to worry about the pandemic and trying to stop the pandemic. Our goal is to do a COOP plan or COOP plan to operate, continue our operations. So how will we decide to do that? And if we decide to do that in phases, whether that's, you know, skeleton crews, reduce our staffing, or however, we'll do whatever we need to do. The biggest thing is to go department by department and decide how can we mitigate your department from being more risk to exposure. I know like 911 has done to reduce people from outside, people coming in. We've done talk with the probate office about some things there. We've still got the tag office. The jail is going to be a whole day's work, thing like that. Trying to figure out how to mitigate these situations. So ultimately, how, to figure out how we can keep people from being right up on top of you, how to make sure we have used supplies that you can clean behind yourself and determine non-essential employees, essential employees, things like that. And if we're going to allow some employees to go home, or however we're going to do that. So ultimately, we're going to go to each department, because each department is unique. This time for, you know, property taxes is slow, but this time for tags is always going to be busy, or so forth. So we need to go east department, figure out how we can help mitigate your department and determine what steps we can do, whether that's push people back, close windows, public education, maybe even extend some deadlines or things like that, so.
Nothing like being put on the spot.
Well, yours is.
This is, this is not something I know how to handle. I reached out to some of the other counties to see how they're handling it. And to be honest, we, most all the counties that I spoke with, they're sitting in a meeting right now, just like we are, trying to decide what they're going to do. I don't know what we're going to do. The tag is, tag office is closed until after this meeting. Before I get back over there, we're going to make a decision as to what route we're going to go. But I'm still looking for answers. I want what's best for my people. I want what's best for the people in Chilton County. I do not want our offices closed. But if that's what's best, that's what's best. That's kind of where I'm at right now. I should know something today.
At this point, as far as I know, we don't have any confirmed cases in Chilton County. Now, I'm sure that it's coming, and that may be from a lack of testing so far. You know, we, we're, we're all pretty hard-headed and we go to the doctor when we're dying, not, you know, before we're dying. So we probably have a lot of people out here who, who actually might have the virus that don't know they have it, and that it's concerning. One thing that we all know that sanitation is going to be key. The CDC has some guidelines that they put out, try to, try to distance yourself six feet away from the people you're communicating with when you have to communicate face to face. And that's something that Judge Calhoun started a few minutes ago. He took some, some tape and taped lines away from his counter to, and he's going to post and tell people to stay behind the line. There will be some situations where there's going to have to be some documentation that will move from hand to hand. And those are, those are situations that, that we can't perform the basic services that are needed in the county without that happening. And so we're going to have to take precautions with that. Somebody had mentioned earlier surgical gloves, and that's an option, but we, I don't know that, what we have available to us right now. So we're, we're kind of left out here, you know, never having faced this before, trying to put a, a plan in place to, how do we handle those things that, the documents and the money and those kinds of things that needs to change hands? So, so we, we all need to, very informally, we all need to have input here. And there's some of you guys that, that have some training and military background and things where you've been trained to deal with these kinds of situations, more so than, than the rest of us. And so I'm, I'm encouraging you to feel free to speak up and we, we'll listen to any input. Who, who wants to go next with their department and kind of assess where you are?
I can tell what we've done at 911. Of course, we have to say open, there's no shutting us down at all. So right now, we've removed access to 911 from anyone other than our essential dispatchers. We've put in our catastrophic plan, which means that they are basically on call 24/7, leave's pretty much being canceled. They can't go out of state or anything like that unless it's an emergency and we have to be notified. Again, if anybody sick, feel any kind of symptoms, whatever, we're to be notified immediately. No public or anyone is allowed inside dispatch, police officers, anything. We'll meet them at the door, pass paperwork that way. Other than that, no one is allowed inside. And we'll be cleaning pretty much every hour. Anytime anybody goes in and out there, we'll wipe the door handles, everything.
Okay.
And we have air purifiers going in and out, so.
Do we have reason to believe that the air purifiers will help?
It, back and forth, it just helps the air circulate better and everything. So, I mean, we've read different studies on it, so it can't hurt. It's not supposed to be airborne, but we still just, we want to keep the air circulate even better.
Okay. Jason?
At the probate office, we put some blue tape down, it's just a little bit, just several inches from the counter. The only reason I did that is to keep people from putting their elbows and experience that first thing this morning. So it's not far enough back that you still can't reach the counter and things stuff.
Jay, Jason, timeout. Joe just pointed out something. This is going out to the public, and the public probably can't hear. So if you will, kind of come closer to that mic where it'll, where it'll pick up. Yeah. Yeah, and I know that's going to be frustrating, but, but the public won't know what we're talking about.
Okay, so there's blue, there's blue painter's tape in front of each window. It's only there to limit people being able to put their elbows or their body parts up on the, on the counter. Also, on the driver's license, we have limited driver's license renewal to those that are expiring within 15 days from the, from today's date. And that date will roll with the date. So tomorrow, it'll be 15 days from tomorrow. Wednesday will be 15 days from Wednesday. And we'll do that, just trying to limit the number of people that we have coming in to do business. We, I've also would like to discuss maybe with the sheriff about potentially having his deputies at the front, maybe ask what people are coming into the building for, and if it is driver's license related, maybe they can convey that. If it's within 14 days, they will renew it. If not, they're not going to renew it, so.
There's no reason for them to come in if it's not.
There would be no, if that's the only reason why they're coming in, but I'll, I'll talk to the sheriff more about that. That may or may not be a good idea. It's just something that I've just thought of, that I would run that by the sheriff and get his thoughts on that.
Okay.
That's really about it right now. We're still trying to go through our processes and try to understand.
What about your, your court? For, for the record, what, what are we doing with, with probate court?
Yes, I think we've received, I think all judges have received an order from the Supreme Court Justice that all in-person proceedings have been temporarily suspended, postponed. I can't remember what that date is.
April 16th.
April 16th.
April 16th. Unless it is an emergency, and then there is several bullets that define what falls into that emergency category. And for the probate office, it would be mental health related, and maybe guardianships of children. But I believe that if any, if it's outside of that scope, then we are to communicate that with our presiding judge, district judge, or circuit judge, excuse me, to, to see how to follow.
Okay.
And that's, that's all we have at this time. Thank you.
I'll follow up with him on what the court had said as far as we have to do. I will give my court, for example, and then Judge Reynolds may want to mention his. We cannot suspend, and the directive does not suspend hearings which would affect constitutional rights. Anyone who is arrested has the right to have a probable cause or be advised of rights, what we call a 72-hour hearing, which I have to do regardless of if it's a holiday, if there's a pandemic outbreak, whatever. So I will be having those this morning, as I do every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. However, the jail, we have been able to do that by FaceTime for about the last year and a half, so that should not be an issue. On juveniles, if a juvenile is picked up on a criminal matter or on a DHR, as has already been done today, I am also required to have a 72-hour hearing. So we will be having that hearing this morning, not knowing what hour we're going to do as far as limiting people in the courthouse. I limit those to only the, the child, the essential court personnel, and the parents. So whatever y'all do, we can either bring them in the front door, or I can have bailiff bring them in the side door, whatever y'all direct on that. I still am required to have hearings which by statute have to be within a time period. I'm currently checking to see if I have any termination of parental rights hearing, which statute requires be held within 90 days. If I have any of those, then I guess we're going to proceed on with those. But have canceled and will cancel, I've already continued all of my, I think I had a civil court docket and a juvenile court docket that are coming up, and I have put those off except for the, the two juveniles that we have to dispose of because they're currently in custody, so.
Okay.
We have canceled, well, for today, there was a huge criminal docket that's been canceled, one for Thursday's been canceled. All jury trials have been canceled until April the 16th. Same way with, as in the district court, non-emergency hearings have been canceled. The type things that will still be going on would be adult protective services, if there's, DHR stepped in to, to attend to some adult that doesn't have anybody helping them that needs, needs assistance, will still be having those. And in fact, some of those are, are already scheduled for later on this week. And we, but the majority of our type cases that come to the circuit court are filed electronically in, like for divorces. Most, a lot of the divorces are just done electronically, and they don't ever have to come to the courthouse. So those type things, we will continue to be working with our computers, either, either from home or from up in my courtroom, my office upstairs. And we'll still have access to that type of information. The court personnel are still, that, that handle that are still going to be able to be in their office. So we're, part of the court system is still going, but the part that where, where you come face to face and have the masses in the courtroom, that's all been suspended.
Right.
And that's till April the 16th.
Okay. Thank you, Judge.
We're trying to cut down as much as we possibly can at the jail, you know, as far as people coming in, you know, we're possibly going to be suspending church services. We're going to probably look at that today, make that determination. A lot of the visitation now goes through the kiosk and stuff anyway, but we're probably going to end up having to suspend, you know, the in-person, you know, coming in, talking through the glass, or whatever. You know, just trying to step up the cleaning to jail when you've got 200 something inmates, and it's just a revolving door, people's coming in and leaving. So, you know, we're just having to get those things done. Judge Speaks brought up too, we're going to try to utilize as much as we possibly can the FaceTime as far as the judges, you know, you know, when they have to see inmates and stuff like that, you know, keep from having to transport them to the courthouse or whatever. We're also doing that some this morning with lawyers. You know, instead of having to come down, you know, we can do that, but we're still going to have paperwork that's got to be passed back and forth, you know, that's, that's got to be done. You know, those are some of the things at the jail, and the sheriff's office staff, you know, we're going to have to come up with a little better game plan that, you know, we're just doing as much cleaning as we possibly can, because people coming in getting pistol permits, reports, and different things like that. So, you know, we're just still, you know, working on some ideas on that and getting those things going. You know, it's going to be kind of hard to shut down our operation, because, you know, we're 24/7.
What about new patient booking and monitoring new, our patients, new, new inmates, before you put them into general population to see if they're affected?
We've got a protocol that come down last week that were, you know, if somebody comes in, you know, that's to the departments that are here and are listening, you know, we're still taking inmates, no, it's not, you know, we're not turning people away like that, but when they come in, you know, if they do have a fever, if they have different symptoms, you know, all those things are taken into advisement. Sometimes they might have to get checked out, depending on how bad the symptoms are, whatever. Other than that, we're going to try to, you know, isolate them as much as we possibly can, because when you got, when you have domestic violence situations, or DUIs, or other things that come in, you know, there's mandatory stays for that, you know, depending on what they blow on the drager, 24-hour stays for domestic violence situations. So, you know, we can't really get around those things. We've got to do them, but we're just going to try to isolate them as much as we possibly can. And like I said, just, you know, step up our cleaning game as much as we can to try to keep everything beat down to the best we can.
Okay.
Like I said, we just want to try to, you know, people watch our Facebook page. We're going to probably be putting out different things that way, so people know, you know, if they're supposed to be coming to see somebody on visitation day, they, they can watch that and just let them know if things have been suspended or whatever. You know, we're just going to try to push that as much as they possibly can.
But you haven't done that as of now. You haven't suspended visitation.
We've, we've not suspended it as of yet, but, you know, that's something we're looking at, maybe starting today from this point forward, you know, because of the court system, the way they've done everything, we're not going to have courts. So that's going to cut down on a lot of the, bringing inmates up here and do a lot of the travel that we normally do, interaction with different people, to contaminate people.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to? Tony, what, what are you guys doing with the road department?
We're in a little bit of a unique situation that where we can kind of isolate ourselves. Our truck drivers are going straight from their vehicles into their trucks. Our operators still have got to have a way out to the equipment, so they're either going to have to double up with the truck drivers or go with the foreman. As far as our meeting places, we have a designated area now for each crew, one in the shop, one, one into the shop, one on the other, one in the break room, and one at their own. The rideaway crew has their own meeting area, so we're keeping them separated. And we'll talk to the foreman more by phone or radio, and the foreman is conveying messages to his crews by radio. Of course, the sanitation, we've got a lot of hand sanitizers and everything that we picked up about a year ago. So pretty much every vehicle has got that, and the drivers and equipment operators are asked to keep their equipment and everything as clean as possible. As far as there in the office, it's not really much way we can separate ourselves much, but most of the time, we're out on paving projects and are out looking at roads, so we're kind of separated anyway. For the most part, it's just the two girls in the office. So as of now, separation and isolation is kind of how we're operating along with the sanitation side of it.
Sure.
My judges have spoke about court, you know, procedures and stuff. I'll cover the election part as absentee manager. I was informed this morning by email to hold off on mailing out any ballots. We don't have any yet. We should, they just, we should have them today or tomorrow, ballots for the runoff on the 31st. I understand the Secretary of State and them are meeting today, I guess talking about maybe postponing the runoff in the Senate, the Senate runoff, so. But we've told not to mail out any ballots until further notice from the Secretary of State's office. So I'm assuming today they're going to meet to see if they're going to postpone the election. So that's all I have. And as far as the clerk's office, we're already cleaning counters and hand sanitizers and stuff like that. That's a good point Judge Calhoun made about the staying away from the counters. I'm going, I'm going to implement that too, so at least contact we can have the best. And as much as they can do online, violence, we encourage that, so.
Okay. Do we have anybody else? So, come on Jessica, you've got a pretty tedious situation with, with your transit, and that's one of the more difficult things I would think to handle.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no way to limit contact with the public for us. They have to take their money when they get on board. So the only thing I would think to do is just kind of limit where we take them.
What, what would be your recommendation for limiting where we take them?
Maybe just dialysis and work, and that'd be really about it, I would think.
Okay, we have Jessica here with public transit, and the, her thoughts are that we would limit where we're taking people, and it would have to be some essential places like healthcare, dialysis, and that, that kind of thing. What, what's your opinion on that, with it being a federally granted program for, for transportation?
I think without suspending it altogether, what you can do is postpone this, some of the people that would be on the, I guess, bus or perp, you know, transportation at any one time, and limit those trips to essential trips, medical, food, and those types of things, which you would put under category of essential service. And then just let the drivers only have, you know, one or two on the same time. And you're going to need to wipe it and clean it once you've had people on it, riding on it.
Okay. All right, thanks. Jessica, do you have the disinfectants and things that you need?
We have a little left, but we can run out probably soon, so.
Okay. Our cleaning ladies, you guys are going to be probably some of the most exposed people in the courthouse. I'm not a medical person, but I would tell you that you need to protect yourself. And you need to do that with masks and gloves, or whatever the CDC says for people like you to do. Derek and some of these other guys have some experience with this in their training, and you need to get with Derek on how to protect yourself. And then the courthouse, we need to smell Clorox. I mean.
We do have six, we have, we do 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 have you guys are going to need some gloves.
We need to give them permission, we need to, whoever they can be in this emergency situation, and then go back to our vendor that's got the bid app, or that's the vendor.
Roger, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
All right. So the vendor who won the, the bid for our cleaning supplies, they're out. And we can get cleaning supply, supplies from another vendor, is it, is that okay for us to do moving forward in an emergency situation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just go with that, I'm pretty concerned. So then they might need to be, or they're armed, we're going to have to share what those people need.
Okay. Okay. So check, Mickey, if you will, and see if they have gloves particularly. We have some disinfectant that is concentrate, we have some Clorox wipes, we have Clorox. But what I would like to see is specifically those counters wiped down several times a day.
Every, I'd say every hour and a half, two hours, make, make a circle. Every, every office has got a count on wiping down what the public comes up and what the employees are, what they think. I don't want to give this to them, but I do that.
I think the staff that works in that office, I know our staff, they're weak.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they, I'm sure they'll get some help, but I mean, you know, it's true them doing, them saying, going to be as many people coming in and out and taking out garbage all the time, they can focus on that more, so.
Well, you, you guys that are working at our, our managing departments, where you have the counter space where you're interacting with the public, get with our people, our, our cleaning ladies, and get the things that you need to wipe your counters and your door knobs and all of that down. But the, the door handles and the door knobs and the counter surfaces, all throughout the courthouse needs to be, any public building, needs to be wiped down continuously, so that we're not, you know, coughing or sneezing in our hand and then transferring it to someone else on the door, on the surface. So, so we're going to, we're going to get together and, and write a plan out based on what we've heard from you guys today, and then we're going, we're going to kick it back out to you guys via email or something later in the day. This is a time right now, though, for any more input that y'all've got, because y'all, y'all know way more about what's going on in your day-to-day stuff than we do.
Mr. Chairman, with the, Tim got an email the other day that all state officers or tag officers are not going to be doing any business hands-on. Is that correct?
Well, yes, I guess so. None of them really, that's what's meant, it's basically saying, but today, we'll be changing, I made the same, we're going to break that, so everybody, like I said earlier, everybody in the state, like I said in the meeting, just like we are. So wait for somebody to make a decision.
With the courthouse, though, you can limit access to the courthouse unless emergency, and post it on the outside of the courthouse of what you're going to allow, just like the tags, I mean, with the license, or the renewal of the license, paying the taxes, or anything like that, because we are in an emergency state. So emergency, and if I'm wrong, Roger, correct me here, when this is, when the governor declares the state of emergency, it covers a lot of ground, and it, and it covers, covers a lot of exemptions. So we can limit the access of traffic in the courthouse by getting to these departments and saying, what is a need and what is a not a need for to come into courthouse? It's like our officers now are saying, hey, if you've had court, don't worry about it, it's been postponed for two weeks, you know, just like with the tax, with the license, and you're going to limit that traffic right there, you know, so.
Well, I think.
You can stop it at the door.
I think, well, that was my intentions of this meeting. Well, I think, I think what, that was my intentions of this meeting, was to define what those essential services are. But if Tim's waiting to hear from the state, he doesn't know how to define those right now. Am I right? And Jason, what are your essential services? Driver's license?
Driver's license, business license, well, essential. Driver's license.
James?
I may be flustered all this time here, but I don't know what to easily say. We have a reputation here for being proactive and proactive. So, in proactives, the state has a big scene right now with all the Department of Commerce. The impression of this thing is to shut down your public traffic in the courthouse, have essential employees with essential functions, not only those essential functions being done at this point. Because, truth be told, in two or three more days, we're going to have a lot more cases. Probably going to be here, you're probably going to be having another meeting or at least a conversation. While in a lot of the proceedings are pretty much followed by kind of what the mission of the courthouse is right now. I'd like to see the representative here, while doing the proactive and doing something that's not illegal because this, from the awful part, just the Clorox virus isn't extremely bad, but it's the amount of time that happens like four days. So, essentially, do we, like, for one or two people in the cities or in the county, the employees, like, to get a better, reactive, shut down everything after, after this being done. Before it gets close to, you know, where are we drawing on science and our ax? When do we start being proactive in something like that? I think we're doing nothing.
I think we also need to follow direction of our governor, who has been proactive in shutting schools down and calling state emergency. First, she called for state emergency for this county, or counties, and we are being proactive, all right? Because the CDC come out this morning or last night and said that they are recommending, whether the states follow or not, a 14-day quarantine for everybody. This is what the CDC says on, but if the governor picks that up and implements that, or President Trump, the day he won, then that would be a time to do that, would it not?
And if we post our limitations at the front door of the courthouse, as that changes, just say, for instance, if Tim's office, if the tag thing shuts down, he can come, he can get, see if we can print a new one, and we can just add that change to it and repost it. You know, repost it as we have to.
Are posting on social media, which is the easiest access to get the widespread saying, if you can pay your fines and costs or get your tag or your driver's license by mail?